I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan?
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Brian Uriahless.
Here.
Doug Shasso.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lynn Deal.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
He's absent this evening. Okay, first item on our agenda is a presentation on the appointment of Kathy Thompson to the Senior Center Advisory Board. Ms. Howe?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Senior Advisory Board has this application from Ms. Kathy Thompson, and the current board members unanimously approved her appointment to be recommended to this body here. So I'd like to offer a motion to appoint Kathy Thompson to the Senior Center Advisory Board.
Second.
Have a motion by Allison Howe and a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Can you inform her?
I will, thank you.
Okay. Next is a presentation on the appointment of Jen Elrich to the Historic Preservation Board. Ms. Crossway.
Hi, good evening. So in your packet you have an application by Jenny Elrich. I met with the Historic Preservation Board last week, and they did recommend for her to be appointed to the Board. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but she's a great applicant. She's worked with the city before, and she currently sits on our planning commission board as well.
Okay. I have a motion to appoint Ms. Elrich to the Historic Preservation Board.
Your Honor, I offer a motion to appoint Ms. Jenny Elrich to the Historic Preservation Board.
Second.
Have a motion by Lynn Deal and a second by Clint Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a presentation on a resolution acknowledging City Manager Jeff Wells's impact on the city of Fort Morgan. Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and council, you have on your table file this resolution. This is the resolution that we discussed in the executive session, among other items, at our last meeting. You'll recall the direction to me was to go work on it. I did that. It's been substantially revised. After doing that, distributed it to all of you individually for comment. Received very little in the way of comment, and thus it is before you. This is one of three major elements in the severance and settlement with Mr. Wells, and if approved tonight, will conclude the severance.
Okay.
I should add, this has been accepted by the other side already. So after getting all the comments, we sent it over and they accepted it.
Okay, so with this, this will finalize everything?
This will be it, Mayor.
Okay. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to acknowledge the City Manager Jeffrey Wells's service to the city of Fort Morgan.
Second.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call?
That resolution carries on a vote of five to one, with Councilmember Deal voting against. And Councilmember Linda absent.
Okay.
I want to thank you all for your perseverance through what's been a difficult bit of patch here. And I want to particularly recognize on the record Nina, who did most of the negotiating on this. She did an outstanding job. Thank you.
Yes, she did spend a lot of time on it.
Yep.
Okay, next is a presentation on bids for the executive search firm for recruitment for a city manager position. Ms. Kirk.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy St. Patrick's Day. So the subject is the selection of the executive search firm for the city manager recruitment. So I created a request for proposal, and the RFP was sent out to 12 firms, chosen from a list provided on the ICMA website and based on past successful recruitments in Colorado. So the city received seven responses. Two city council members were assigned by the mayor to review the RFPs in order to make this recommendation to council. One responded and one did not, and the mayor then was asked for his top two recommendations, which he did provide. So I tallied the responses from the council members, and in your supporting documents, I have included the entire RFPs for the top two firms and an analysis of each as far as their strengths and weaknesses. So the firm names that were selected as the top two city manager executive search firms were KRWN Associates, based out of Colorado Springs, and CPS HR Consulting, based out of Littleton. Actually, they're based out of California, but they have an office in Littleton. So the analysis basically goes over the number of dedicated personnel that would be available to work on this, what their schedule is, what their price is, their warranty, strengths and weaknesses of each. And basically, I have consciously decided not to give my own recommendation to you because these two firms meet the needs of what you're after, but I think that it's more about fit among you that needs to be discussed here. So. I would say probably the biggest differentiator between the two are the size of these firms. One is significantly smaller than the other, and the other being price. One is significantly more expensive than the other. So. That being said, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I did have an opportunity. I requested that they send me all the respondents that we had, and I spent a significant amount of time on my own reviewing all seven that were submitted. I put my own pros and cons together on it, so I had a substantial amount of time to give my input on it, and I found that my ratings, I guess, were a little different. I had Baker Tilly as the second choice, but KRW was my first selection. I thought that what they had put together, their Colorado experience and what they had, was a lot of Colorado towns that were of various sizes, and I felt that they would meet the needs. As well as they had their setup for the interviewing process. They put together a meet and greet with the candidate. They had two separate interview panels. They would be engaged with it. They also had a variety of backgrounds from the principals that will be involved. And they also had the past executive director for Colorado Municipal League, Sam Mamet, who has some Colorado connections. He's very familiar with Fort Morgan on here. He just got hired in in 2019. And with their presentation, the initial group, I don't know how Sam will take it, being low man on the totem pole on this one, however.
Oh, I know.
But I think he can bring something to the table with that. And also, the biographies of the rest were rather impressive to me. So.
Your Honor, I also read both of those word for word. And the other one, it's very eloquent and beautiful, and they had a brochure and they had everything. But the meat that I liked of the KRW was these people have served in the, they've been managers, they've been the police department. I mean, they certainly know the inside of everything. And then, of course, Sam Mamet. I can't speak highly enough about him. If he's involved in it, I just was real impressed with the quality of the people working on it to really know what they're looking for and how to listen to it. I was really impressed with that.
Anybody else have any comments or thoughts on the two packets that Ms. Kirk supplied?
Susan did a great job keeping us informed and involved in the process. I think we're pretty comfortable moving forward tonight with your recommendation.
Our recommendation as a group, as a group?
But yeah, they had a lot of similarities as far as all of them, but the value for the price for KRW was pretty good. So I think we'll get a great value and good experience with them.
Any other questions, comments, or seeing none, I would entertain a resolution?
Your Honor, I offer a resolution on bids for an executive search firm to recruit candidates for the city manager position, and I would like to recommend KRW Associates, Colorado Springs.
Second.
Okay, I have a resolution by Lynn Deal, a second by Doug Shasso. Vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work, Susan. I appreciate it.
Sure, I'll reach out to them and get the contract started.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a presentation on first reading of an ordinance approving the lease purchase financing for the Field House project and a request to schedule a public hearing on ordinance for April 7th. Ms. Kenny.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have here with me Nate Eckoff, who works for Piper Sandler. He is the placement agent that we chose a couple meetings ago for the loan that we want to take out for the Field House. I think before we talk about the ordinance, I think it'd be really great if Nate would go through the process that he went through to come to the selection that we're recommending tonight. So Nate? Yeah, yeah.
Mayor and council, my name is Nate Eckloff. I'm with the firm of Piper Sandler, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to put out the city of Fort Morgan's financing to bid, on a private placement basis. We sent the RFP out to approximately 25 to 30 financial institutions around the country. We focused, of course, on the Fort Morgan County, I say Fort Morgan and Morgan County, I should say, to make sure the institutions here have the opportunity to bid on this financing as well. We received eight bids back on March 10th, and I can just quickly give you sort of the range of what those were. I'll talk about the two best ones, frankly. The range of bids was for a 10-year financing of 1.51% at the low range. At the high end, it was 2.51% from the eight institutions. And for a 15-year financing, the low rate was 1.71%. Again, that's the average rate for the 15 years, with the high rate being 3.25%. So there was some range in the rates, but you received several very low bids, and I'll just briefly tell you what those are. BBNT bid 151 for 10 years and 171 for 15 years. Vectra Bank, which has a presence in the metro area of Denver, bid 1.6% for the 10-year financing and 1.85% for the 15-year financing. Both of these bids, along with several others that we received, are callable at any time, which means if you enter into this financing, you would have the ability to pay it off early, should you choose to do so, which is obviously a very important feature for the city because you'll want to make sure you have that option or that flexibility in the future. What else can I say about it? I guess that's about all I have in my notes at this point. The best bid, obviously, was BBNT on both a 10-year and 15-year basis. Vectra Bank was close behind. I would note that BBNT's bid is held until the 28th of April, so it would be important for us to close the transaction by then, or they have the right to walk. With all the volatility in the market, and I'm sure you've seen that, there is some concern that if you don't lock it in by the 28th of April, that they would walk away from that. Vectra Bank gave you until May 8th, however, so if you choose not to go with BBNT, you'd have Vectra, and they would lock theirs as late as May 8th with their bid, which they submitted to the city, or to us to present to the city. So on the whole, you've probably seen what's going on with interest rates. The Fed has acted considerably in the last couple of weeks, lowering rates essentially down to zero on the short term. Municipal rates really haven't followed as much. They've actually been more volatile, and at one point where they actually went up, municipal interest rates went up compared to the U.S. Treasuries, which is very highly unusual in our market. From the 30-some years I've been in the business, I don't think I've ever seen anything approaching this, even with the financial crisis in 2007, '08, and '09. So I would say that we hit the market at a very, very good time, though. We caught it before municipal rates rose in the light of this, and so that's why you're able to see the low interest rates of the various institutions that were presented by Ms. Kenny and by me here tonight. So I don't know if you have any questions for me. If you do decide to go forward with this ordinance, you, again, are locking in, you know, rates probably as low as 171 or 185 for a 15-year term. Very, very favorable financing in this market. Questions?
What's the cause for the municipal interest going up as opposed to the Fed?
Just the massive uncertainty of what's happening. Today, for example, well, over the course of the last weeks, actually, starting the day after we received the bids, things started to go kind of wacky. There was a large financing for the Air Force Academy Tourism Center there through Colorado Springs that was put in the market that was actually put on hold because rates went up just due to the uncertainty. A lot of cross currents in the market. Stock markets obviously dropped. You normally would see, well, you would see Treasuries go down at the same time because there's the flight to quality. But then with municipals, I think there's just so much uncertainty of what's in the market. And so today, I know, for example, there were several higher education issues around the country that were put on hold, just because, or either on hold or pulled from the market because of the uncertainty of rates and feeling that municipal rates should be more closely aligned with where Treasury rates are. Normally, you'd have municipal rates selling at some percentage of Treasuries, and now they're selling at a percentage over Treasuries, which is unusual. I don't know if I can really get at the root cause, other than the coronavirus concern and everything else that comes along with that.
Kind of an anomaly.
And plus municipalities are usually not broke.
No, true. But again, I think the important thing here, from the city's perspective, is you did get in the market at a good time. You got firms to lock in low rates for you over a relatively long period of time for the type of financing and given the volatility in the market. So it is a good opportunity if you choose to go forward.
So ours didn't go up?
Yours, at this point, they're holding these bids until either the 28th of April, if you take the very lowest bid. Second lowest bid is till the 5th of May, and others agreed to lock some, one, let's see, one bid. We've actually, two bids, no, one bid, we've gone beyond the time already, which is, I won't mention it, but one of the institutions basically had until the 17th of, no, excuse me, I'm wrong about that, 17th of April, not 17th of March, my fault. If there are no questions, I'm available if something comes up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to work with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your service. Eight million or 10 million?
That's a good question.
That's a very good one.
We wrote the ordinance so that it was not to exceed on everything. It was a really good idea that Jeff had to just set it up so that it's not to exceed the amount, not to exceed the period of time, so that it's still, you know, a good ordinance. But the idea is that the last page of the ordinance will be the actual terms once we decide, if we can decide that tonight. I think that, to be honest, at the rate that we have, I'm tempted to say 10 million. And, you know, I'm a very conservative person. But I'm also tempted to go 15 years because of the fact that we have no penalty for early payments. So at any time, we could do like we did with the water loans and pay them out a little sooner and get a better deal or whatever. It would be hard to imagine, for me, a better deal than 1.71%. But we have a really good opportunity to get a lot of money at a really low rate. I can't say, oh, we could put the money and sit it somewhere and make more because we all know that the interest rates are awful. Our investments are down to .11% at PFM this week, so, yeah, not good. So .11%, so that's like .0011.
So if we made the decision or wanted to look at 8 million as opposed to 10, do we have the reserves to meet that without impacting our bottom line?
Yes, we could just borrow 8 million. We could pay the 2 million out of reserves. There is a little bit of a concern with that with regard to when you're, because of, is it Tabor? I'm not sure exactly how it is. He is, though.
No, in fact, older than that.
Okay.
There's a concept in Colorado law, and Jeff, you may be aware of this, called the compulsion to renew. And so if a local government enters into lease purchase agreement and puts too much equity into the financing going forward, under Colorado law, it's presumed that the Colorado Supreme Court would eventually, could eventually say that you've put so much equity in it that you've lost your right to walk away or you've kind of given up your right to walk away on an annual appropriation basis. Now, we can structure this financing, if you put 2 million into it, in such a way, we believe, that would alleviate that problem. So it's your choice, but just be aware, there's a concept of compulsion to renew. So if you put too much money in, a reasonable person would say you'd never walk away from that because you put so much money in upfront. Again, we can structure around that. We just need to know that before too much longer, so we can do it correctly. I don't know if I answered the question, but.
I have a question, probably, I'm being vulnerable asking it, but it's something that I've thought about because I just don't know enough about this. I was thinking, the reason you were going to finance this was because you probably had cash making more money because sometimes you don't want to spend all your cash because that cash can actually make you more money than to do something like this. But I'm not familiar with how you put all this together. That's why I'm asking the question because I.
Go ahead, yeah.
I can touch on that. I mean, currently in the market with your cash, obviously, it's invested more short-term. It's under invested pursuant to Colorado statute and city code. And so you're at a lower rate just because of the market as a whole. Over the course of the next 10 or 15 years, it's possible, obviously, that rates will be much higher than 1.71%. I don't think I'd speculate on that in the very short term because of what the market's doing. But one would have to say, at some point, it would be higher. So you're right in your assessment that, you know, you would try and invest that cash more than what you're borrowing at, but in the current, right now, at this particular point in time, that wouldn't be the case, but at some point, it could be. And so I think our advice many times, and we're not in a financial advisory situation here, but many times would be, at least preserve some of your cash. You don't want to, you never want to spend yourself down. Having grown up on a farm, I know we like to, you know, obviously, keep a little money in the bank once in a while for things, and so it's pretty similar here, too. You want to keep some of your cash for a rainy day.
Well, and we're limited on the investments. We're able to utilize our public funds, and as well. Way different than what I could do with my personal.
Yeah, I just was wondering about that. I was going to ask somebody and didn't, so I thought I'll just ask you.
The other thing is just the strict idea of having cash. We have a very, very scary situation right now. There are times where people may not pay their utility bills. We don't really know what we're going to be facing. None of us do. I think the opportunity to get cash at a price that is this good is probably something we wouldn't want to pass up. And I need to correct, when I said .11%, that's the percent I saw for term investments. The other money is earning 1.59% right now at PFM. That's not considering the other long-term, short-term investments. That's only that little bit of, well, it's not little, but I mean, that smaller amount that we have invested, it's probably about 16 million that we have invested in the new C-SIP program and the term investments, the ones that I.
I was hoping to hear you say that that money was making good right now.
Well, it had been, quite frankly. I was really happy to make journal entries that showed interest income that was as good as it was over the last couple of years. But everything everyone was planning on and thinking of has changed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just was wondering.
We've invested in short-term for quick liquidation if necessary. We have some invested in one, two years, and then we have maybe.
Yeah, three to five and one to three.
We've diversified the investments on it because before, we had it in pretty much past book, and we were making something well.
Yeah.
Don't make much in it on that. So the Investment Advisory Committee has put together a diverse investment for, if we need liquidated cash quick, we could get it out of there without penalty or.
Yeah, that's why we have the part that's earning the 1.59% and the.
And that was based on us being able to utilize our five-year capital improvement plan and that. So if we got something five years down the road, we've got that bucket of money that is invested and growing on it that we can utilize. So that was the rationale between the.
Yeah, and when you look at like the cash statement, I think I've given you one since you've been here, but the cash statement, we actually had to take out of the water in order to pay the bill this time. We took 6 million out of their short-term, but it was so handy there. It wasn't like we had to go through a lot, like you do sometimes with investments to get them cashed. But, you know, things like that, that's the reason we saved that money, so we'd have it, and we ended up, yeah, we had to spend it, you know.
People ask me the questions, and I couldn't answer it. And I thought, well, maybe that's the case, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Talking about the investments, that includes electric, fund reserve, gas, the various enterprise funds. gas, the various enterprise funds, as well as some of the general fund side of things. So it's not, it's a pool of cash, but it's separate pots that all make up that.
Right.
And this being a rec center, it's like you'd ask the other meeting, this would come out of the general fund. And the general fund has about $24 million, but the general fund will have less as we see things not being able to be paid, so, by people to us, you know. I mean, the bigger, we are considered big in the city, and the bigger people do get hit, just like the smaller.
Good, thank, thank you.
Yeah, so anyway, what, I was thinking 10 million, but I mean, we can do 8 million, you know. It's totally...
If we go 10 million or 8 million, I, I don't see the potential of us walking away from an asset on there.
I would, I would offer this, so just remember that in either situation, you can call these at any time, so you can pay them down. If you got a year out and decided to pay it down, you'd have the ability to do that.
So you had said, if we upfront, just do the 8 million and have 2 million in the equity on this building, how is that going to play in if we do the 10 million and then down the road of a year or...
You'd be able to pay some of this down, you'd pay some of the lease down early, is what you would do.
So do we get a penalty or have...
No, there's no penalty for prepayment. Prepay, callable at any time, no, no prepayment penalty. No, the equity shouldn't become a problem, then.
It's just at the beginning.
It's at the begin, essentially at the very beginning.
Okay, so if you buy...
Yeah, you got a couple years down the road, you'd still, I've never seen that play out where that's been a problem, where you've paid some of it off early.
So any more questions?
Does anybody else have any questions or...
I have a question on this, the BBNT and Vectra, either the 10 or the 15. If you look at the bottom, the bank council fee of $20,000. BBNT has it for 20, Vectra does not. What is that?
Right, but it's still cheaper for...
Yeah, I still checked it with Vectra.
Did you do that, 20,000, if you move it back? So that's why we still say it's less.
Yeah, BBNT came back, I believe. I want to just look here, I think...
I think there's a difference of like 10.
There's, actually, it was not to exceed 20, but they came back with 7,500 for a fee, rather than 20,000, just so you know.
Okay.
We just didn't have that. So it's even, even better. But yeah, we figured out the, what the interest rate would be if we, because of having to pay that, and it was still better than Vectra. But, but I mean, it's, those decisions are you guys, is what you want to do.
That's what I came up with as well.
Yeah, since there's no penalty for 10 over the 8...
Pardon me?
Oh, since there's no penalty to pay off early, if we take the 10, it's probably a better option for us at this point.
Because even in a year, we might say, hey, you know, we're good, all these things we were worried over, and then pay it.
So the direction that you need from us tonight, besides reading this, having the first reading for the ordinance, we just need, yeah, have a little bit more discussion up here, if we feel comfortable going with BBNT.
So just really quickly, for BBNT, the bank council fee is going to be 7,500, not 20,000, right? Okay. Okay. I would be in favor of the 15 with BBNT.
And then you need to know if we're doing the 10 or the 15 years, right?
Yes. I'd be in favor of 15.
15, that would be, I mean, that's pretty substantial.
And we also are saving some money, because we're doing monthly, monthly payments instead of the annual. Everything we have in the past, it's, it's been like June 1st and December 1st, and it's like, no, let's just pay it each month, and you save quite a bit doing that.
Great.
Okay. So 15 years with BBT for 10 million.
Sounds good. We got a, we got a nod from Clint.
That was a question.
There's a period.
If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution on the first reading of an ordinance approving the lease purchase financing for the Field House and request a scheduled public hearing for the ordinance on April 7th. Do we need the parameters for the financing included in that, Jeff?
I don't think so.
Okay. For April 7th.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Clint Anderson.
Excuse me, Your Honor, can we have the terms laid out also, because you're kind of approving that as well? Which bank, which term, and which amount? Because that has to be put into the ordinance.
With, what's the right procedural for, with an addendum to the resolution? Okay.
Withdraw the resolution.
I'm withdrawing my resolution and offer a new resolution to direct staff to accept the bid from BBNT in the amount of $10 million over 15 years, and a resolution to, on the first reading of an ordinance approving lease purchase financing for the Field House, and to request a public hearing for the ordinance on April 7th.
Second. My second.
Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny.
And thanks a lot to Nate.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, Nate. Okay. And we decided to forego number eight for now?
Yeah, I think for now, just with everything that's going on.
Going on.
Yeah, removing that one from the agenda for the time being would probably be prudent.
Yeah, good call. So item number eight will be brought up at a later date and time, and we will address that after we have...
Things calm down.
...set throughout the nation, so, and Mr. Glamire's not here.
Did he get back from...
He did make it back. Yes, he's back at work today.
So with that, the next item on the agenda will be the consent agenda by resolution. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes item A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for February, and item B, approval of the minutes of the March 3rd City Council regular meeting. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Okay, if there's no questions or revisions, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. A resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, public comment or audience participation for items not on the agenda. Seeing none, reports by officials and staff.
Um, yeah, we've, I think John has included all of our press releases that have had to do with the coronavirus updates. This has been a very interesting time, you know, I think for everybody. It's been interesting for us as staff, as quickly as all of this keeps, you know, changing, we, we're trying to do our best to keep up with it. We're trying to keep the, the public informed to as, the changes that we're making internally. We've been working, we're trying to meet on a more regular basis as a staff to make sure that we're meeting the demands of our departments and that level of safety that some of our departments feel with, you know, access to the public and everything. So I think all of that spelled out in the press releases. We'll continue to do the best we can with everything that's going on. I think we're still at this point, no confirmed cases in Morgan County. I'm sure that'll change eventually, and we'll just keep responding and reacting the best that we can. You know, we've, all of our guys are focused on what they need to be doing and what we need to keep doing as, you know, the city of Fort Morgan, and so we'll continue to do that. I appreciate the help that I'm getting from my directors when we get together. Jared is now joining us at those meetings, so we're keeping the police department involved with everything that we're discussing. I just think on a personal note, with everything that did get handed down in the governor's resolution yesterday, there's going to be some pretty trying times, and we would probably do everything to encourage citizens to do as much for their local businesses as they can. I know today I did wander down Main Street just to see who was serving, drive up, and it seemed like everybody was, you know, still serving food, they just had their lobbies closed, so we encourage that as much as we could possibly do. I know there are some businesses that are trying to get together and have some discussions about what needs to be done. I'm trying to make sure that if Sarah's available to attend some of those meetings, that she can. She's finding out about some assistance programs that are out there. And I know John has brought to my attention that some of the communities are already doing declarations for the emergency, depending on what level of, you know, funding there might be available in the future. So we will start looking into some of those things, and potentially at the next council meeting, might have something like that, depending on, you know, what is required of us as we move forward with all this that's going on, so, but, interesting times, that's all I can say. But other than that, we can just keep moving forward, and, and we're trying to minimize our contact with our internal staff as much as we can, and then our, our external contact with customers, too, so, but be happy to answer any questions.
Not just for us, it's nationwide.
Yeah.
So it's going to be a huge impact across the entire country, but we will persevere, I hope. Any other...
Nope, that's all I had.
Reports. Okay, bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few bids. We're accepting sealed bids for 1,500 KVA pad-mounted transformers until 3:00 PM on March 19th, for two precast concrete men's and women's single user flush restroom facilities until 2:45 PM on March 19th, front-end wheel loader until 3:00 PM on March 30th, and upfitting three police patrol vehicles until 3:00 PM on April 2nd. Under meetings, I believe we've canceled all the board and commission meetings for the remainder of March, and we'll kind of just proceed as, as things continue to unfold. As far as the next city council meeting is scheduled for April 7th, which is three weeks away from tonight, so that gives us a little time to try and figure out a way to do remote electronic meetings, which most municipalities seem to be moving to, but we've got to be able to do that with allowing citizen participation. So I'm sure Nelson can figure something out. There's a lot of different softwares and kind of things that you can use, and we'll, in, over the next couple of weeks, we'll be working on that.
Okay. Very good. Nothing else for the council? This meeting is adjourned.